Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Your tickets should read that you're at the Livingston County Board of Commissioners meeting for September 22, 2025. My name is Jay Dricke. I'm the chair. I'm calling the meeting to order. We will start with a moment of prayer by Commissioner David Domas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I picked a particular prayer that I've used before, but I think that it's very appropriate in today's times. It's the prayer of St. Francis. So if you would please bow your head for a moment. Lord, make us instruments of your peace. Where there is hatred, let us sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. Where there is sadness, joy. Oh, divine master, grant that we may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in forgiving that we receive. It is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and it is in dying that we are born to a new, eternal life. Amen.
Would you kindly stand, remove your hats, and we'll say the pledge of allegiance together?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Helserman.
President.
Commissioner Domas.
Here.
Commissioner Sample.
Here.
Commissioner Nakigiri.
Here.
Commissioner Dricke.
Here.
Commissioner Deaton.
Here.
Commissioner Ponovich.
Sure.
Commissioner Fiani.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
For him as present.
Thank you. Item number five on the agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda for September 22. Can I get a motion to approve?
So move Deaton. Support Domas.
I've heard Commissioner Deaton make the motion and a support by Commissioner Domas, correct?
That's correct.
All those in favor kindly voice vote, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. I'm hearing nine to zero. It passes. We're on to employee recognition. Who has the document? Wes, take the floor, run the show.
Thank you. It's an honor to be the presenter. Is this on?
Yes.
It is on. Come on up, Leah, you're stuck with me. Just for a little while, yes. So I'm here to introduce Leah Morcom. She is the winner of the employee recognition, and it's really an honor to be able to present these because I get a chance to meet the winners. And I have a little note that was included with your award, which I'll hand this to you. So hold on while I say a few words about Leah. And just for a little bit of background, Leah has been with the county for 21 years, working in a few different departments and roles until finding her home at the sheriff's office as the jail administrative coordinator. It is the job of the jail administrative coordinator to manage the day-to-day support services of the jail. This includes supervising staff, resolving operational issues, records management, providing administrative support to leadership, and responding to issues that crop up both inside the department and with citizens and inmates. This is an important position that requires someone who can juggle a lot of tasks and can establish great relationships with both coworkers and public. So let me give you a little bit of details on Leah's nomination and why she got the award that I'm happy to present today. Leah was nominated by another employee within the sheriff's department who witnessed her work and wrote in to share her exceptional service with the Employee Recognition Committee. This is a quote, says Leah provides outstanding services by always being there when needed, never too busy to help someone else. Anything that needs to be done in the jail or anywhere else in the building, she will go there and get it done in a timely, orderly fashion and complete the task. All the tasks she completes are done with a smile and a great attitude. She never fails to return calls on her phone or computer messages or a simple shout-out and makes sure your questions are answered completely. Outstanding employee, end quote. Leah's nomination jumped out at the recognition committee for a few reasons. Her nomination shows that she is that employee in the department that you can go to if you want something done. She has answers. She knows where things are. She will drop what she's doing to help you, and she will do it all with a smile and a pleasant attitude. But add to that the fact that Leah is a frequent nominee, so we know that this is not just a one-time thing for her. This is who she is, and this is an example she sets on a daily basis for her coworkers. And this is the face she shows to the citizens of our county. We are so proud, me particularly, to recognize her consistent dedication to her job, her coworkers, and the Livingston County community. Thank you so much, Leah. Leah told me she wanted to talk for 15 minutes. You do have to come up here and get a picture with us if you...
There she is. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Wes. Item number seven on tonight's agenda reads correspondence. Seven A is from Marion County, seven B is from Chippewa County, seven C is from Kalamazoo County. Can I get a motion?
So move, I move to place on file. Accept and place on file.
Support Deaton.
Motion by Commissioner Fiani, support by Commissioner Deaton. All those voice vote kindly say aye if you care to approve.
Aye.
Say nay if you're against it. I'm hearing nine to zero. Correspondence will be placed on file. Item number eight is called to the public. The first one tonight is three minutes. There's a later one in the night of two minutes. If you have a card, hopefully you've turned one for our clerk, and now it's her job to call the people. Go ahead.
Deb Dricke, Howell City, followed by Steve Williams. Many of you know that I and Jay held a vigil Thursday at the courthouse. It was a wonderful experience. We had well over 1,000 people. We prayed, we sang, we re-remembered, and honored our fallen friend Charlie Kirk. I'm here to request a policy change. When I first tried to reserve the courthouse lawn, I did it in the name of the Republican Party, and it was politely but promptly denied, saying that Republican Party or Democrat Party, they weren't allowed to reserve, which, okay, in the interest of time, I just switched and said, fine, put in my name, I'll reserve it. So we did, and we went forth. But I sort of started getting a little frustrated with that thought. I remember years back, at least on one time, if not more, that the KKK was approved to be on that, on those steps. And I thought, how come they could get approved, but either the Republican or the Democrat Party would be denied? I didn't see the logic in that. Your partisan politics are important parts of community. They discuss things, and we all, right now, we're very, very acutely aware of how important that discussion is. People's ideas and thoughts need to be shared and discussed, and this is in a public forum. And if the Democrats or the Republicans wanted to hold an event on the courthouse lawn, I don't, I cannot think of a reason why they would be disproved. But the, as I said, a hateful group such as KKK, which everybody agrees is horrible, they could be approved. They would be denied. I mean, it's free speech. It's the First Amendment violation. Government is stopping a group from speaking. So I guess I'm here to formally and to ask that policy get reviewed and changed to allow a political party to stand on that front. And either political party, any political party should be able to utilize that courthouse lawn to hold a peaceful gathering. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. I will provide a copy to the clerk before we're done, so that you can all have a copy if you prefer. I don't know, you may not remember, it's been a long two weeks, but I have a seven-and-a-half-year-old stepson who is missing. It has now been a month, and I say missing because his birth father moved out of the house, as verified by Sterling Heights Police, and refuses to provide his address to the attorney, our attorney, or to the friend in court, as required by law and the judgment of work. And you guys may think I'm Piper Valley, but we'll go ahead and look at these pictures because this is the truck that seven-and-a-half-year-old Gavin was in on his birth father's lap because the cab was filled with adults when it was wrecked, okay? And my wife has spent years trying to get... Am I loud enough?
No, you need to record.
I'm sorry. Do you want me to start again? I don't either. No, this is...
Your choice.
Whichever. So Gavin was in a wreck. This is the truck. You can see that the bed had to be replaced, body panels had to be replaced, the side of the trailer was wrecked, and he says he was on the lap of his birth father, and the windshield was crashed. And my wife has spent years trying to get the medical records that he's entitled to with no help from the courts. Okay, now understand that Gavin's a kid. Gavin tells us the police were there. It was out of state. We know it was out-of-state travel, so I can't get the Michigan records. Like in there, there's a record for another crash. He tells us that the police officer gave him a critter. I never knew that cops carried a bag of stuffed toys in their truck, in their trunk for children, but he did because he was there. He said he went to a hospital, they took pictures of his bones, and they put a pipe in his penis and made him pee in a bowl, meaning they were looking for blood, okay? Meanwhile, Judge Susan Longsworth wants to know why Gavin called me big dad and has put in a court order that my wife is supposed to discourage him from calling me big dad around the house, which of course is legal. All you guys have to do is start using Google AI, and you will find out there is no law, and it's actually recommended to let stepchildren call stepparents whatever is comfortable for them because they have so little control over their life. Meanwhile, when Gavin gets picked up to school, we have no idea where he's going. He says he's living in a single-story house with seven adults. His birth father, his birth father's girlfriend, that girlfriend's two adult sons, that girlfriend's sister, and two adult daughters. Two baths, three-bedroom, and they're tearing up the basement with jackhammers, right? But yet, we don't know where it is, and the court has given us no help. And the gal, 15 seconds, the gal, attorney Melanie Forza, remember, she's the one who is focused on getting her paycheck, not taking care of the child? I forgot this before, but when we were in court last time, this is the documentation that my wife had provided to her about a variety of things, including all those offensive OFW messages, and she threw it on the table at the courtroom and said, there you go. That's where her interest lies, not in protecting the child. Thank you.
Wes Nakigiri, Heartland.
Thank you very much. I wanted to share some perspectives, you know, on Charlie Kirk. I didn't really follow Charlie Kirk. I knew who he was. I knew he was on the conservative side. I knew he was hated, hated by the left, but I never did watch any of his stuff. I never went to any Turning Point USA events. And actually, I regret that I haven't. I did take the time after he was assassinated to look into his life, and I was surprised that, on how he's conducted himself, because if, I got most of my information from the media about Charlie Kirk, you know, he's, and I thought he was going to be a flamethrower. He would be somebody kind of like, not that I'm against Rush Limbaugh or Sean Hannity, but I mean, they're pretty aggressive, and they say some, you know, pretty harsh things at times. But Charlie Kirk was not like that. He invited the other side to speak. He welcomed the dialogue and discussion. And so I thought to myself, here, I got snookered. I got snookered by the media because I just kind of took him at face value. But here's a guy, very moral, strong in his beliefs, but very civil. And I do believe that society and politics could benefit from a little bit more, or maybe a lot more, civility. So I, you know, thinking about that a little bit more, I said, you know, I got snookered by the media, and I truly believe that there's a problem, not just in national media, but locally too. You know, I have pointed out, I have researched and posted on the internet a couple of fake hate crimes that have happened here in Livingston County. And you know, that, in my mind, you know, what can be more divisive than that? To have people, you know, smearing other citizens, calling them racist, implying that the entire community is full of racists? I can't think of many more things that are more hateful than that. I do believe it is incumbent on the, on people holding elective office, and that includes my colleagues here, to speak out the truth when we have objectively verifiable information, as in police reports, that show that these hate crimes are fake, or any other smear of our community. And I'm contemplating, and I haven't got the policy quite drafted, but I am looking to have the county take a bigger role in disseminating the truth about our citizens. Thank you very much.
Welcome. Any other cards?
I have no further cards.
Just to, do we have anybody's hand up on Zoom?
No, Commissioner, we do not.
And I see none also. Call to the public, item eight is now closed. We're at nine A and nine B. It reads approval of minutes. Nine A is minutes dated August 25, 2025, and nine B is meeting minutes dated September 8, 2025.
Motion to approve nine A and nine B, Sample.
Support Deaton.
Motion by Commissioner Sample, support by Commissioner Deaton. Any discussion? Seeing none, voice vote, all those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Nine to zero, both nine A and B are approved. We're on to number 10, which is tabled items from previous meetings. Anyone has a tabled item they want to bring forward? I see no hands, and I don't have any, so number 10 is done. We're on to number 11, reports. Any commissioner wish to report items of interest to other commissioners? Anybody have a report? I see none. We're past number 11 then. We're on to number 12. This is a FOIA appeal by a person named Treasure Rosello, if I have that correct. And the time will indicate we're about at 6:20 for the commencement of this FOIA appeal.
I'm just here if there's questions.
The board already has copies of the documents, and... Is a complainant here? Is there a person in the room named Treasure Rosello, spelled R-O-U-S-S-E-L-O? I don't see anybody responding. Is there anybody on Zoom? Is there any attorney representing Treasure Rosello in the room? Is there an attorney on Zoom that might be representing Treasurer or Treasure Rosello? I'm seeing nobody in the room, and I'm seeing nobody on Zoom. Nonetheless, we have to proceed to give a hearing.
Mr. Chair.
Proceed.
As the county FOIA coordinator, I just want to make you aware that we did notify the appellant of the hearing of the date and time and provided the, notified this person, they would have the opportunity to address the Board of Commissioners on their appeal, and they could attend in person or via remotely via Zoom.
Please make that part of our record, and please make part of our record that we called for both the person Treasure Rosello in the room and on Zoom, and we also called for any attorney, and both were negative. The juxtap of the appeal is that there is a request to recalculate down to, I think, zero, the FOIA fee that our staff mailed to Ms. Rosello, saying that it's going to take two hours at a roughly 72 bucks an hour, and you need it half to begin. And that's the crux of the appeal, that we estimated in a fee, we estimated in a fee, and the lady asking for the FOIA documents objected. Apparently, the county responded by a letter, and our calculations were made according to our policy and the statute. Correct, Ms. McGregor?
That's accurate.
Right. Would you like to add anything?
I just want to add that it is a very unusual request. The request was for log data as opposed to actual data, so it took some effort to determine whether or not we even had log data. The closest thing that we could get to it was if anything had been ordered through our online services. And we, in some instances, the identifier was included in the order notes, but one of the things that she specifically asked for, the records don't, the reference is not a name or an address or a parcel number. And so I had to do a, I had to do an inquiry in order to find her documents that were named or had her name on them, and then had to go in and find those document numbers in the register of deeds orders. So it took more effort than some requests take.
And the amount that you suggested as the total fee was $145.70, correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Thank you. Board members, we have a choice now of doing one of three things. We can waive the fee of $145.70. We can reduce the fee below $145.70, and we can uphold the fee and issue a determination that the basis that is in the paperwork sent to the requister supports the fee. Of those three, can I get a motion? And then we'll discuss if we need to. One is to waive, meaning we reduce 145 to zero. One is to reduce 145 to some lower number, and the other is to say, nope, 145 is it.
Without the individual appealing it presenting much, I move to uphold the fee.
Thank you. We have a motion, motion by Commissioner Fiani, and second by Commissioner Sample. Discussion? Commissioner Nakigiri?
Oh, I had a question. This might be better for me to pose to legal counsel. You know, the appeal request, it's got six different items that, you know, that are mentioned in the appeal. Item number five, they're appealing the public interest waiver. It says, finally, under MCL 15.234, I request a waiver or reduction. This request is for legal and investigatory purposes regarding property records access and is clearly in the public interest, not commercial use. Is that a public interest waiver, I say, appropriate to be a, being part of this appeal in terms of legally?
Generally, no. Generally, the purpose for which it is going to be used is irrelevant in terms of calculating one way or another. And Tim from our, Mr. Perone from our office has looked at that, and he found no basis. You have the discretion and the options, but we found no legal basis in terms of that would necessitate a reduction or a waiver.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you. Commissioner Ponovich.
Procedurally, if you have an appellate, they make an appearance, get an attorney.
Excuse me, Commissioner, can you please make sure your microphone is on or you're speaking into the microphone?
Procedurally, if you file an appeal, if you go to court, file an appeal, and you don't show up, they dismiss it. Wouldn't I have an attorney making an appearance? Is there any correspondence from an attorney? And the appellant isn't here? So my feeling should be dismissed.
If I can interject, the appeal itself is properly before, even if they don't show up. So you can go, you can vote on one of those three, but it's not, you can't just dismiss it because they didn't attend.
Any other comment, question, or analysis? Is everyone prepared to make a vote on motion by Fiani, seconded by Sample, to uphold the fee and issue a determination that the basis was in the paperwork that supports the remaining fee? Seeing none, we'll go voice vote, all those in favor of the motion to uphold the fee of $147, $145.70. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any against, please say nay. I'm hearing nine, zero ayes, and so we have upheld the fee. You need me to sign some stuff today?
We have a letter prepared that you will sign after the meeting for me, please.
That'll get done. Thank you. We're on to item number 13, entitled Resolutions for Consideration. 13A reads 2025-09-127. It's a resolution appointing members to the Livingston County Board of Canvassers, brought to us by the county clerk. Joe, go ahead.
Can we get a motion first, please?
Don't move. Good point. Support Deaton.
Motion by Domas, I believe, support by Deaton.
Are we going to admit it, put names in there, Tom? Is that...
Yeah, I actually have a ballot for each one of you that I'm going to hand out because this has to be a ballot.
Yep, we have a paper ballot.
However, it is a, according to the statute, you have to cast your vote on a ballot.
Going through a tabulator?
This will be a hand tally.
Mr. Chair, if I could just give a brief overview on this resolution, if that's permissible?
Certainly.
This is one of these rare appointments that goes outside of the normal... This is one of these rare appointments that goes outside of the normal board process for appointments. It is actually governed by statute. We have some timeframes. So by September first of the odd years, the county parties submit the names of up to three candidates that they wish to have considered for these appointments. And then the Board of Commissioners will be appointing one Republican and one Democratic member tonight. So just an overview of the responsibilities of the Board of Canvassers. They're a bipartisan team of four that review all of the paperwork following every election. And they either canvass and or certify that election or they just canvass depending on who's who's going to be doing the certification. So for federal and statewide elections, it's the State Board of Canvassers. So our work goes up to the state level canvassers and they do the certification. The law is specific, as Joe mentioned, that we are required to use paper ballots for this process. However, they are not secret ballots. Most election ballots are, and this is not. So they're subject to FOIA. Anyone could request to see those. I am requesting the reappointment of the Democratic Canvas member Judy Williams and reappointing the Republican candidate Joan Runyon to the Livingston Board of Canvassers for another four-year term. Judy Williams has served as an appointed canvasser since 2017. She has served as the vice chair of the board in the 2021 to 22 cycle. She's been the chair of the board for the 2223 cycle through the recounts that we conducted at that time. And she did an outstanding job as our chair of the board. She's currently serving as the vice chair until her term expires at the end of October. Her contribution to the canvassers is invaluable. She knows the paperwork, has an understanding of what she's doing. And our four canvas members as a team are very efficient and effective in conducting the canvas in a very timely manner, which ultimately saves the county money. Joan Runyon, to those who may not know Joan Runyon, she was our elections coordinator, so in the role of Mr. Joe Bridgman for sixteen years prior to her retirement. So she has a depth of knowledge with election matters and election administration. And prior to that, she served as the deputy township clerk in Tyrone. And so her experience and her knowledge of the election process again keeps us running very efficiently. A bulk of the responsibilities are to canvas the elections, but they also do things such as every four years, they have to approve all of the ballot containers across the entire county that are used to store voted ballots. And again, in a very efficient manner, they do this in as timely and as few days as possible. So I would request the board honor the request and reappoint Ms. Judy Williams and Ms. Catherine Joan Runyon, please. We're happy. We do have, I saw Ms. Williams here. I did not see Joan and I don't know if she's available online, if there's any questions for the candidates.
What about the Monica Craven? Is that person here?
Judy is, I don't see her here at the time.
John?
They were invited.
I think John was supposed to be here, I'm not sure. John is here?
Yes, we did invite all of the candidates to attend either remotely or in person.
Correct.
Is there any inquiries or comment by any commissioner? Any questions necessary? Commissioner Helserman?
My, I've observed the Court of Canvassers. It's been several years back, but you blew the fancy sludge, we saw it for quite a while. And, you know, this is, I think they do a very good job and we appreciate all the work they do. It's a hard job and we're just looking for the facts. That's it. And if that's where our country was, we'd probably agree on a lot more.
Gentlemen, if you finish your ballot, fold it so the number is the only thing that's visible at the top. So fold it.
Want that number to show or what?
Yeah, so the number shows.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Would you mind if I invited Ms. Dobin Meyer to watch Joe tally those so that it's done in a bipartisan manner like all of our elections are handled? Would you mind if she just joined Joe to watch him tally? Would you like to, Ms. Dobin Meyer?
We'll wait for the tally.
Okay. Pardon. Oh, Deb, why don't you too, please? Absolutely. We have both of you here.
Sir, once votes are calculated, would you like an amendment to the resolution, note in?
Or? You don't, you don't have to. We will go, we will fill in however the vote is, unless legal counsel prefers an amendment to it. I didn't think so.
While that's going on, you want me to sign what I need to sign later?
Well, let me make sure I have you sign the correct letter.
What kind of interrogation process goes on to make sure they're Democrat or Republican? You guys have that up?
Here it is.
The, they're nominated.
This is from Natalie, so.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Chair. This will be the one to uphold. And I'll make sure Natalie gets a copy of this as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Rosa.
Okay.
We have eight here. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine and nine there, correct?
Correct.
So, Mr. Chair, if you're ready, the results?
Please.
Drumroll? No, just teasing. So we have eight votes for Judy Williams and nine votes for Joan Runyon. So those are the two.
Please make the record. And we're done with item thirteen A.
How about we have a vote on the overall motion to appoint?
We'll do a vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
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 All those opposed? Nine, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're on to thirteen B. Thirteen B reads two oh two five dash oh nine dash one two eight. It's a resolution to certify officer and employee delegates to the 2025 Municipal Employees Retirement System Annual Retirement Conference, brought to us by Human Resources. Can I get a motion?
So move Sample.
Or Gross.
I've heard motion by Commissioner Sample and support by Commissioner Gross. Any analysis, questions, discussion necessary? All those in favor, voice vote kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. I'm hearing nine to zero. Thirteen B passes. We're on to thirteen C. It's two oh two five dash oh nine dash one two nine. It's a resolution authorizing a non precedent setting, one-time-only donation of vacation time to an employee within the courts that is the district court. Can I get a motion?
A little Gross.
Senator Helsman.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Helserman. Any discussion, analysis, questions needed? Thank you for the memo. Thank you for the resolution. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm hearing nine to zero passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
We're on to two oh two five dash oh nine dash one three oh. It's a resolution authorizing contracts to provide community-based treatment services to youth and families in our juvenile court. Can I get a motion?
Don't move. Support Helsman.
Motion by Domas, support by Helserman. Any need for any questions, analysis, comment, argument? Seeing none, I'll close discussion and we'll go to voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, this one is a.
I'm sorry. Yes, I see it now.
Okay.
We'll switch around and pretend those voices didn't get heard and we'll go with a roll call.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakigiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Ponovich.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We're on to thirteen E. That's number two oh two five dash oh nine dash one three one. It's a resolution authorizing, a resolution authorizing the capital purchase of four ambulance remounts in fiscal year 2026, brought to us by Emergency Medical Services. Is there a motion?
So move Deaton.
Second, Sample.
Motion by Deaton, second by Commissioner Sample. Any need for presentation by Director Felpoche? Any questions needed? Comments, argument? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Ponovich.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakigiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thirteen F reads number two oh two five dash oh nine dash one three two. It's a resolution amending the EMS fiscal working capital policy, brought to us by Emergency Medical Services. Can I get a motion?
So move Deaton. Support.
Motion by Deaton, support by Domas. Is there any need for presentation or questions? Cross-examination of Director Felpoche? Everybody understands? Good. This is a roll call vote. I take that back. This is a voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine to zero, unanimous. We're on to thirteen D. It reads two oh two five dash oh nine dash one three three. It's a resolution authorizing and concurring with an advance from the delinquent tax revolving funds to Marion and Genoa County Drainage District for the purpose of paying preliminary costs brought to us by our treasurer, Treasurer Nash. Can I get a motion?
So move Deaton. Support Helsman.
Motion by Commissioner Deaton, support by Commissioner Helsman. Discussion, questions, comment? Commissioner Nakigiri.
Yes, I have a proposed amended resolution. I want to elaborate on before I actually make a motion to amend so we can have some discussion. I don't know, you may recall at the last, when we approved this out of finance, I had asked questions about, you know, is there a way that we can protect, you know, citizens that live in the drain district from having to pay any assessment associated with this development? In this case, we're talking about development in Howell. And actually, this applies to any development, but we'll use the specifics for the racetrack. And then, as I understand it, it also is potentially rerouting some traffic in there. So the, those two things will necessitate improvements to the drain, the existing Marion, Genoa drain. And the way it's set up now with the current resolution, the citizens that live in the district that have nothing to do with the, you know, the new development are likely to get assessed with having to pay part of the costs of both the engineering and then after the engineering is done, the actual drain improvements. I, I'm morally opposed to that. You know, they had, they've been living in the district for however long they've been there, have nothing to do with the new development project, yet the law enables them to get assessed. I, I am not a fan of that. So I've been working with legal counsel to understand what the Board of Commissioners can do to voice our disapproval of that. And, and, you know, it basically boils down to what I had said on front of each you. It says proposed amended resolution. If you look on the first page, the last two whereases, and then on the second page, it, the therefore be resolved. Those are the key changes. I will also mention that this proposed amended resolutions contains the modification to the interest rate that was approved in finance. It was agreed upon to go with 4.34%. But, so that, that's also shown in this proposed amended resolution. The Board of Commissioners has limited authority in this whole, in the field of the drain, that is certainly, statutory authority lies with the Drain Commissioner and others. However, when the, the issue of spending money out of the delinquent tax revolving fund is solely within the discretion and control of the Board of Commissioners and the second to last whereas in the front page, it says the expenditure of surplus, and by the way, I've, I've passed all this language by Mr. McNulty. He's here tonight. He can answer questions, any questions that you have that I can't answer. The expenditure or use of surplus delinquent tax revolving funds proceeds, including but not limited to a loan or advance to a drainage district for maintenance and repair of a drain or construction of any part of a main drain project is solely within the discretionary authority of the Board of Commissioners. So when they, we have full discretion on what we want to do with the money, you know, what, how the delinquent tax revolving fund will be used. That is solely within our discretion. So this resolution, amended resolution expresses our policy preference, if you agree, that, you know, we're not going to spend any money on this county money unless the people that have, private entities, private citizens have been living on the drain district that have nothing to do with this don't get an assessment. Now, that doesn't cancel the project. The project can still go forward, but they would have to get conventional financing. So, you know, our role in this is with the power of the purse is to say you're not going to use taxpayer money under our discretion to advance a project where unless these private citizens are, are held harmless, for lack of a better term. So the, that's the intent of the resolution. I, if you agree, which I hope you do, I would hope you would vote for the amended resolution.
Questions? Commissioner Helserman?
I have questions, okay? And this is the first time I've seen this. So is, is this the case with this drain district? Is this a district, the improvements here are just for one project?
The drain petition, the petition that was delivered to the Drain Commissioner was for improvements necessitated by the racetrack development and for a bypass road, if I understood, the Deputy Drain Commissioner.
Okay, okay. So, okay. And then my, my next question is whether, you know, Ken can answer this. Can that be easily divided, you know, divided out? You know, obviously, we could say that the revolving fund cannot be used for something like this. You know, we have that authority. Are you asking, is that the authority that you're saying if, if, if this goes, if this is paid for by the general drain district, that you don't want the revolving fund to pay for it? Is that...
Correct. It has to be paid for by the developer. The improvements required to, the drain improvements required to enable this development to take place have to be paid for by the developer. It is a common practice, and I've chatted with the Heartland Township manager who is familiar with the Ramco development, which was the Myers store on M59 in Heartland. The, the developer had to pay for significant changes, improvements to M59. There is a housing development going on right now in the township of Heartland where the developer is going to be able to use the current sewer system. It has the capacity to do 37 more homes. He wants to do 52. And after he gets his 37 in, if he still decides he wants to do 52, he has to make the improvements to the sewer system, which is essentially another lift station to accommodate the extra sewage. It's not the people that are currently being served by the sewer system. They have, you know, they have nothing to do with the development. You know, the, the profit, if you will, of the development will be, is to the developer. And in my opinion, he should, the developer should pay for the improvements required specifically to allow his development to go in.
So then, with this revolving fund, who pays? The, the district pays back this as opposed to the developer? Is that...
Now, the way that, the amendment, the way the language is on the amendment...
I mean, you know, normally, the way we're doing right now, I would assume that the developer is paying the lion's share of the improvement. That's what my assumption is, and that some of it isn't, and that's the portion that is involved here. So I'm not sure.
Would you like me to address that?
Yes, I, yeah.
Okay. So Section 152 of the statute addresses assessment and apportionment, and it says the Drain Commissioner has to assess in accordance with the principle of benefit derived. So we cannot legally, under the statute, with respect, Commissioner Nakagiri, we cannot do what he is suggesting and assess one party for work done on another party's property. We did not see the modifications to this resolution until about 10 minutes ago. So I can't really elaborate on it in any great depth, but we consider what's on the table with respect to this resolution as circumventing Drain Commissioner John Keir's authority under Sections 151 and 152 of the statute. Obviously, it's your gentleman's call as to whether or not you allow Jenny to loan us money for the project, but Drain Commissioner John Keir doesn't want to be tied by the language in that amendment as it's proposed. So if there's support for the modification, we'll withdraw this request for the Marion and Genoa drain.
Would you like time to make a phone call to Drain Commissioner?
No, I've been texting him regularly, so.
All right.
He said he's home having a heart attack after reviewing the language, so.
I think that our attorney, Rich McNulty, has a different opinion on the legality of the wording of this resolution, which I got his approval on.
We've, I've corresponded with Rich. I have his cell phone number. You know, it's up to you gentlemen how to proceed. I just can tell you that from our office's perspective, we view that language as something that's quite restrictive. It circumvents Brian's authority in terms of how to set the rule. Our agreement with the city is that the city's paying for the improvements within city limits. However, since the final route of the road wasn't selected or determined until very recently and still may be subject to change, there hasn't been a final agreement in that regard with respect to what the city's going to pay. But our full intent is that the city is going to pay for the cost of the improvements related to the bypass road where it intersects the drain right of way.
So, so the way that it is right now, okay? There will, the Drain District, these charges will, of this $300,000, which is probably not the whole project?
No, definitely not the whole project.
Okay, so this, in your mind, this $300,000 is, is the amount that the whole Drain District gets a benefit from?
I think that's a reasonable conclusion because it's obviously exclusive of some of those costs associated with those road improvements. You can't build a bridge, even a pre-stressed, you know, one of those prefabricated box structures for less than hundreds of thousands of dollars, and they're going to need two of those. So I suspect that just the two crossings is going to exceed. I'm not sure I really have a good number in my head, but let's say three to five million dollars.
So, so most of this project is paid by the developer, then? That's...
In terms of the bypass road and the crossings of the drain associated with the bypass road? It's paid by the city and by the developer, yes.
So by no means is it the whole development, so, okay.
Commissioner Gross.
Ken, is there some degree of time sensitivity on this resolution?
At the last meeting, we discussed if I was ever late in paying you, and I think now I am.
So we have a, you know, we have the 2023 note of $100,000 plus $4,300 of interest that is due by the end of September. So the, the plan was to use, right, the $300,000 advance would be paying back the first note and then the additional engineering cost leading up to the final issuance of bonds for the project.
So we have the wherewithal to still pay off the original note absent this?
The drain, oh, go ahead.
We would, we have a relationship with a financial institution that would loan us a one-year note in this amount, yes, if, if the board elected not to load us monies out of the delinquent tax revolving fund for the Marion and Genoa project.
Okay, so having heard that, Mr. Chair, I move that we table this resolution for the reason that I think we need to have a meeting established between the Drain Commissioner and his staff and Mr. McNulty so that they can have an open, frank discussion on the relative merits of this resolution. Apparently, there's different legal perspectives, and I think we need to get that resolved before we can make a decision. With all due respect, respect to my colleague, I, I personally don't like to get a change of resolution.
Commissioner Gross, can you please speak into the microphone a little bit better?
With all due respect to my colleague, I don't like the idea of getting a proposed amended resolution at the last minute. And it's obvious that there's different points of view with respect to some of the details between our legal counsel and the Drain Commission Office that, and I think that needs to be resolved. So if we can table this till next month, I think that would be appropriate. And if the drain can satisfy the existing note that's due apparently sometime this month, they can do it some other way. That takes that off the table.
I'll, I'll second the motion to table. Is this a motion, point of order? Is this a motion to table to October 20? That was the date we moved October 14th to. So you're looking at October 20?
I would be hopeful that a meeting could be arranged relatively soon such that we would have a, a final version of the resolution at October 20th.
Is that okay with your second? Yeah, yeah. So it's motion to table until October 20? And it's the hope and expectation of the board that Attorney McNulty make arrangements with the Drain Department to discuss the legality of the two, or the be resolved and the amended resolution? I will do. I have a point of order. I don't, was there a second to his... No, I'm just, I just had to understand the motion first. Wes? Now I'm asking, yes, second was by Wes. So there was a second to his amendment? Yes.
Second to, to the motion to table.
Motion to table. No, no, I understand. But the, the motion to amend?
I never made a motion.
Oh, so, so we're still talking about the original without the change?
Correct.
And, okay, so I, I, I see, I see no reason to table. I think, I think we should move ahead with this as it is, so, without, without the amendment. I think that, you know, because this is, this, what we got tonight is not the amendment that we're talking about, right, or the, not the resolution we're talking about. Well, in a sense, it is.
Proposed amendment.
It's a proposed amendment, yeah. Okay.
The, the one that you, that is on the, that is being, it, there was a motion to, you know, pass the resolution as it exists in the, in the agenda package.
Right, yes. And that's the motion that you're wanting to table?
Correct.
Chair, I see that the Drain Commissioner has his hand up. Could we hear from him? Yes, thank you. Commissioner John Keir, turn your mic on. Let's hear from you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Proceed.
I'm really baffled at this last minute thing, especially because we weren't notified of it. But while you guys can require anything you want in that resolution for funding, you can, you can say that, but Brian can run across that room and back in under five seconds, that will lend him the money. And I ain't going to make it because you know my knees. That doesn't make it right, though. And I explained to Commissioner Nakagiri today that we'd already looked and had a tentative agreement on the board that would require any improvements specific to this development to be paid for by the city of Howell. And so we'd already taken that into account. We're pretty careful in terms of who gets the bill for these things. Now, there's lots of other work that has to be done on the drain that will be assessed to the entire district. And so there will be work in other areas that benefit other people that the developer will get a bill for on their special assessments. Even though it's not something, it may not be something specific to them, it may be upstream from them. And so I, I'm just absolutely baffled at this point, why we do this at the last minute again when a call could have been put in place. And on top of that, apparently, we're taking, we're, we're taking our, our drain law degree questions from the manager of Heartland Township. I mean, why not call us? We're the ones that do this and day, day in and day out. And the language in that resolution specifically and directly contravenes the whole idea of benefit derived listed under the drain code. So again, I don't dispute that, I mean, you're welcome to put that in there, but it's not something that I could legally agree to. I just can't, I can't do it even if I wanted to. So that's where we're at. I think it's disappointing that we spend our time coming to these meetings, and this is where we're at. I think probably we'll just look to, to, to do our financing elsewhere. Very, very disappointing that we couldn't be upfront with this.
Commissioner Sample.
If you, you guys could get financing outside the county for this repair, whatever, for the improvement?
Yes, yeah, for the Marion/Genoa note, we could get outside financing for that.
And then still assess the residents throughout the Drain District, right?
Correct.
At potentially a higher cost of financing?
Potentially, yes, yep.
Than at a loss of interest to the county? That they would have received over the loan?
Yes, that they would have received over the loan, absolutely, yes.
But remember, it, it increased to the county. Remember, the county pays an apportionment for benefits due to, benefits to the road. So the higher the interest rate that we borrow at, the higher interest rate that the county is paying on this. So I want you all to remember, it's a two-way street. It's not just what you're losing, it's also what you're paying. And so when we come to ask for a loan under the revolving fund, it's to benefit everybody that's subject to an assessment, including the township, the landowners, and the county.
Any further questions or discussion?
I'm, I'm actually just curious what Mr. McNulty, his commentary is on the language.
Rich, can you talk? You have your mic on.
Hold on just a second. Can you hear me?
Yes. Commissioner Deaton would like a more thorough explanation, I suppose.
Well, just, just basically, is the language legal or not?
The language is legal because we are not taking away the Drain Commissioner's ability to assess benefits or to obtain other financing. What we are saying, and whether it's a good idea or a bad idea is up to you because, because the Drain Commissioner makes some points. But, but legally speaking, as I've told you before in relation to the county receiving grants, and you've asked for opinion, says, hey, can they put these conditions on the grants? And the answer is yes, because they have discretion. Well, when you are loaning tax revolving fund money, which you have the absolute discretion on how it's used within certain parameters, but other than that, it's the board's discretion, you can put conditions as long as you are not contravening a statutory or constitutional right. And by making sure that, being that there are alternate mechanism financing, you can do it. Whether you want to do it is up to you, but you can do it, in our opinion, you can do it because this is in relation only to you lending or advancing revolving tax funds for this purpose, which is totally discretionary.
Commissioner Sample, go ahead. I guess my question is, is, I, I get the point of if you're, the development is costing the residents more money, right?
Yeah.
But if, but if they're going to get a, if, if you're assessing the benefit, you could...
So that was actually going to be my follow-up question, because I feel like we're all on the same page. We're just coming from different angles and this is causing misunderstanding, overall misunderstanding. So my... So my, my question is, if, if like, let's say this racetrack wasn't going in, or the city of Howell didn't want to do the bypass, or whatever it might be, what kind of cost would we be looking at for such a project, or would such a project even take place?
So the drain is, was last improved via petition in 1946, I want to say. So over 75 years ago, there's no doubt that the drain needs work. So, and, you know, a petition definitely would be entertained if it was received absent of the racetrack and absent of, of the bypass road. So, you know, the, the scope of the drain improvements would be strictly limited to the drain. You know, there wouldn't be drain crossings at the roads, for instance, because there would be no road. So, you know, the, the portion of the costs that would be a portion to the city in that scenario would be significantly less because there would be fewer improvements going on within city limits.
Commissioner Dean? Thank you, Chair. So Resolution 133, purpose of paying preliminary costs, we went over this two weeks ago. So no matter what happens, this project's gonna happen, whether financing comes to the county or you seek outside sources, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so these are new developments, and new developments purchase REUs, so they're gonna be paying other costs as well, correct?
I believe so, but I'm not privy to all those discussions between the city and the developer in that regard.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Commissioner Nakagiri, you had mentioned that the drains were last improved or last maintenance, anyway, in 1946? And that they definitely, this isn't quoting, but you, you asserted that they definitely need, I'll say, repair or upgrading or something. I wonder how the residents feel about that, given that they, you only need five people to petition to improve a drain. Are we seeing flooding? Are we seeing problems? I, I would say we, we aren't seeing enough problems where the, where five citizens or five, I'll say, property owners are up in arms and they're exerting their rights to, as a minority, to petition the Drain Commissioner for improvements.
You'd like me to address that?
Yeah.
So the standard for the threshold for what signers are required to improve a drain, it hasn't changed to my knowledge dating back to the Drain Code, prior to the Drain Code in 1956, the Drain Code in 1933. So the way that drainage law works, a minority of landowners absolutely can petition. They, they've been able to petition for, for 100 years. That's been the structure of that law. We did have attendance at the necessity hearing a while ago, fairly substantial attendance, but still probably no more than 15% of the district showed up. I think we had the meeting at the Tully Building. You know, it's not something, we, we have informational meetings, we have a necessity hearing set by law. Do we go attempt to get consent from a majority of the landowners prior to levying an assessment under the Drain Code? If we did that, we'd never do maintenance. We'd never do improvements. So we wouldn't do any work. That's, that's the fact of the matter, and maybe Brian would want to elaborate on that, but...
No, I'm saying, yeah, I guess, maybe word the question more succinctly. It, it is, I, I believe you asserted that, you know, we need, that these drains need work anyway.
That's correct. The drain needs work.
And I question how much work, because are people, how vigorously are people complaining? They're, they're not complaining vigorously enough to?
It depends on where they are. Pardon me, I didn't mean to interrupt, Commissioner.
So, I mean, this proposed amendment doesn't interfere with the ability to do the maintenance work. You know, it, it is focused in on new development or redevelopment or modifications caused by, you know, a, a public entity or private entity. It is going to require drain improvements that would not otherwise have been there. And I just think it's wrong to, and, and, and certainly the statute enables it, but it's wrong to assess a portion of those costs to people that have been in that district, you know, for years. And they have nothing to do with, you know, the decision to put in a new development, to put in the racetrack, to put in the bypass. And, and actually, some of these citizens don't even live in the city limits of Howell. You know, it, it's, I don't know the exact boundaries of the Marion Genoa Drain, but I, I'm thinking it's not unreasonable to believe that citizens in Marion and Genoa Township are, you know, could get assessed for this, for this new development in the city of Howell.
Would you like me to address that?
Yeah.
So Section 152 directs the Drain Commissioner's Office to assess based on the principle of benefit derived. So, you know, to answer your question, we don't disagree philosophically that, you know, if we do improvements that benefit a property, that that property is going to be subject to additional assessments because it derives additional benefit. However, you know, in terms of the scope of the project and, and the size of the improvements, you know, these are things that are worked out through an engineering process. We're, we're in the engineering process. I, I can't tell you exactly what the difference would be between the project with the racetrack and the bypass road and without the racetrack and the bypass road, except that the crossings within the city of Howell would probably be deleted or substantially altered as part of the project. So it's, you know, it's hard for me to speculate on exactly what that differential would look like. But, you know, our position is that Section 152 directs us to assess on the principle of benefit derived, which means that the district is assessed based on the overall project and the cost apportioned amongst the properties and public corporations in accordance with Section 151.
Would, say, say there were no maintenance, say, say the drain project were just, the improvements were just because of the racetrack? And, and, and there was no additional work done to, to handle, I'll say, deferred maintenance? So it's just for the racetrack? That's the only reason why these changes happened? Would the developer get charged 100% of the benefits?
There is a provision under the Drain Code where that could be done via Section 425 or 433, correct? Now, that, that's assuming that no other work is needed downstream on a drainage system. And the reality of development is, generally speaking, as land is developed, imperviousness increases, and as imperviousness increases, more capacity is needed downstream, generally. Whether or not that capacity can be obtained is entirely, we, we could have a long discussion on that topic alone.
Who, but, so in that situation where, you know, the downstream capacity, you know, the downstream flow has increased because of the, you know, the more asphalt in this development and you get more runoff, more, more water going downstream.
Mm-hmm.
Does the developer pay for that? Those downstream modifications necessary to prevent the, I'll say, potential flooding? Or the, whatever surface water runoff issues there are downstream, is, is there the ability to assess the developer for that?
That is a complex legislative problem. You know, look at a map of southwest Oakland County in 1950, and look at a map of southwest Oakland County today. And obviously, there's a fair amount of additional water from there moving through the Huron River that affects some of our residents. And, you know, I, I cannot say conclusively that that's always possible to do. It's where it is possible in isolated instances, it's something that we endeavor to do. But eventually, as in cases with the Huron and the Red Cedar River, you run out of slope. And if you don't have slope, you're not gonna move water.
Thank you. Commissioner Girls?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two things. First of all, Ken, if we weren't doing the racetrack and no road improvements?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And it's been 75 years since that drain was updated? And, and nobody has filed or requested any improvements, any repairs, correct?
Pardon? Nobody's requested repairs?
Is it true that nobody's?
Well, we've, we've, we've done active maintenance on the drain over the years.
You haven't gotten a request from any of the property owners to do anything?
The, the petition that we have came from the city of Howell, correct?
Yes.
Not from property owners?
Okay. So theoretically, we could go another 75 years of not doing a damn thing with that drain unless we wanted to do it on our own somehow, right? Be ready.
If you could freeze time, I guess I could agree with you, yes.
Okay. So, so it's the new development, the new roads, et cetera, that's the precipitating thing. The property owners have not asked us to do anything. The second point I want to make is tell my colleagues a little story with respect to special assessment districts, because that's what we're dealing with here. And there's some people are gonna be assessed and asked to pay whether they like it or not. Several years ago, I got a phone call when I represented more of Hamburg Township. And Wyman's Lake is a sizable lake, and it's filling up with silt that primarily is coming down Tean Road. Our friends in the Drain Commission did an assessment, and they've got a plan to eliminate that problem by putting in a drain on Tean Road. The cost of that project is gonna be partially paid by the Township of Hamburg, partially paid by the Lakeland's Golf Course, which abuts the lake, partially paid for by the property owners around the lake, and partially paid for by property owners who can't even see the lake. They can't use it, they don't access. If they drive by one, one part of it, they'll see the lake. So I got a call from a property owner in Arrowhead Subdivision, and I don't know how far away, maybe a half a mile, and she's gonna be assessed. And she doesn't want to be assessed. And I, I did some investigation, and I said, well, what you're gonna be assessed is like next to nothing. She's, I don't care, I don't want to pay anything. The project hasn't even really started yet, I guess, because there's been some litigation involved, it's still ongoing, but at some point in time, she's gonna pay. And that's part of the process of special assessments. And I think that same situation is gonna be applicable to this particular drain whenever that gets resolved. Some people are gonna pay whether they like it or not. It's just part of the way that activity is done, if I'm correcting, understanding it properly. Commissioner Fiani?
For the bypass, has the Howell, City of Howell committed to that yet?
I do not believe so because they are still working through issues with and handle pipeline with respect to the isolation distance from their mains.
Okay, is, you may not know the answer to this. Is the bypass, was that a project or one of the projects that was presented to the Michigan House Appropriations Committee or funding?
That I'm not aware of, Commissioner.
Okay. I'm a bit concerned because I'm worried that the city of Howell may not have the fund in for the bypass project. And so if we were to proceed with this $300,000, this $300,000 drain project?
Mm-hmm.
And then the city of Howell does not proceed with the bypass, bypass project? I'm concerned that we may have expended money unnecessarily. At, at their, at their request, you know, to boot, so to speak.
We have not, we would not assess any cost for anything related to the road or, or drain crossings to anybody outside of the city of Howell if the bypass road falls through. That, that's what I could tell you. Well, I can tell you two things. The, the other thing is, is that there are sections of that drain, there's a section of that drain in Genoa Township where there's a house with a walkout, and that walkout, you can see from Latz Road. It's clearly within the influence of the drain when that thing crests bank full. You know, if something isn't done, there'll be water in that basement.
But they haven't petitioned yet, though.
Well, we've gotten calls from them.
Going, going back to what you mentioned about the city of Howell not being assessed, no, hear me out, no, hear me out.
Okay.
I thought you might, I thought you just mentioned, and maybe I, I misunderstood, but I thought you just mentioned the city of Howell may not be assessed if the bypass didn't go in. Or did I misunderstand?
What I said was that if the bypass road and the crossings and the drain associated with that bypass road weren't part of the project, the city's apportionment would be reduced. The city's percentage would drop because we wouldn't be doing as much work within the city limits of the city of Howell.
And so, okay, so we're on, we're on the same page, and so?
I didn't say they weren't gonna be assessed at all if the bypass road didn't go through.
Okay, I, I understand, yeah, I understand what you're saying. So now I see why you made the face.
That's okay, sorry.
But what I'm saying is, or what I'm getting at is, so the project scope for the drain would be reduced in price if the bypass didn't go in?
Outside of those bypass road areas, I don't necessarily think the scope would change. But within the city of Howell, within that section from roughly the D-19 interchange upstream to the, the place where it crosses back under I-96, just west of the railroad tracks, the scope in that area would change substantially, absolutely.
So I guess to bring this home, so to speak, and please correct me if my math is wrong or I misinterpret something. Right now, essentially, somebody owes the county $100,000 and that's due by October 1st. Sounds like essentially whoever that is, they don't have $100,000 and they want to refinance. Am I still correct? We definitely do not owe $100,000.
The Drainage District owes $100,000.
We're not the Drainage District. Because we don't owe anybody money.
You're, you, you have?
If we did, then you would see a lot of heads rolling.
You, you have a roughly 30% stake in the Drainage District based on assessment for road benefits. But it's the Drainage District that owns? But it's the Drainage District that owns the money, owes the money.
Agreed. So let's say the total scope is $300,000 because that's what we're talking about in the resolution. We're talking about loaning out $300,000 for 4.34%. So that's approximately, well, that's $4,340 per year in interest. The potential threat or proposal or whatever it may be is you may go to outside financial institutions for that funding. If we were to amend the resolution.
That's correct.
I'm correct so far.
That's correct. Yep.
So in essence, maybe, maybe, what, they charge 5% maybe?
I'd have to, I have a contact at one bank in particular that I'll reach out to in the morning and find out what that rate would be.
And so potentially, the only harm, if the board actually didn't even take action on loaning out this money, would be maybe $1,000 more per year in interest total?
There'll be addition, I mean, there'll be additional issuance costs too. It won't be a full-fledged bond issuance at this point. It'll be a note placement most likely. So probably between $5,000 and $10,000 for issuance costs.
$5,000 to $10,000, but one time, a one-time expense of that.
Yes.
For issuing costs. And then whatever the interest rate would be over the course of.
Correct.
So, and it's the drain district that would incur that issuance cost. Am I correct? Which would include the county.
And the property owners and the townships. Yes, absolutely.
So everything incurred eventually gets assessed out to special assessments. Yes.
And the payback period for this is one year, right?
Yeah.
One year.
And yes, one year.
So at the end of the day, if the county did not loan the money, the county is really not out any money because we already are collecting interest on that money sitting there in the revolving fund. So we're still even. So all we're really looking at is $10,000 to $15,000 incurred by the Drainage District plus maybe an additional $1,000 due to interest. With all that being said, to be quite honest and upfront, Commissioner John Kier, you're going to have to cover your ears for this one. I'm not comfortable with actually loaning this money out because I'm not comfortable with the project as a whole, at least right now. And so with that being said, I'm certainly supportive of tableing it. And we can certainly have additional conversations that. Oh, I think Commissioner John Kier dropped off a Zoom. I must have really upset him.
Oh, he's upset. Sure.
As I said, though, I'm certainly more than happy to have additional conversations about this. But I am gravely concerned about where things stand from a financial aspect when it comes to the bypass project in the City of Howell.
That's fair.
Commissioner Helsman.
I agree with the idea here that the developer should pay for everything. The question is of drawing the lines. That's a matter of judgment. And Jesus talked, I think when Jesus talked about putting a new cloth on an old garment. Okay, so we're, you know, we're saying we want to put just the new thing and let the developer pay for the new thing, but the new thing connects to the old thing. And the old thing is going to deteriorate because the new thing is going to overpower it. So whenever we do this, there's also, there's always a place of judgment where you have to complete the project. And when you complete the project, everybody in that district gets a benefit. Okay, so if the new project calls for bigger pipes in the whole district or in part of the district, the whole district benefits from it. And so in my mind, we're, we are not, I don't see ourselves as overcoming the judgment of the Drain Department because I think the Drain Department has the best judgment on this. Second of all, okay, if we loan the money, we get the interest from it. And so when you're doing your calculation, it's not just, you know, you know, they pay this much extra, is we get this much less. If we, if we're borrowing it from ourselves, we are getting the interest. The delinquent fund is getting the interest for this. So.
It's already collecting interest, though.
Pardon?
It's already collecting interest, the delinquent one. So that's why I made a note of it being a break.
Okay, is it collecting 4%? It's in the bigger, it's in the bigger thing and maybe we're, you know, what is the return on the?
The idea is we are loaning money for one year at the rate we would get had we invested it for one year. So it's not a loss to the delinquent tax revolving fund. It's a net.
So basically, so in my mind, the way that this is set up is ideal. And the idea of saying it's a new thing and we only want to pay, we want them to pay for the whole thing, even though we're improving the whole thing. And so the people that are not in the new thing, they're going to get, so them paying some money is okay. I don't, I don't understand. I understand the ideal, but I think that the ideal is so hard to equitably handle. And it seems to me that we've been doing this sort of thing for quite a few years and I, it seems to me that I don't see the way we're doing it as broken. Okay, if I saw it as broken, I'd say, yeah, let's change it. But in my mind, I don't see anything broken here in the way that we're doing this. We've done this for a long time and it's been beneficial. I'm ready to approve this as it is, you know. Personally, I, I don't see a better course than this course. Okay, we can talk about it and talk about it and talk about it. But at the end of the day, whatever you guys decide is not going to be better than the project that's in front of us right now. We can go around and around as much as we want. In my deacons meeting, my dad would always say, we've gone around this bush before. You know, we've already talked about this. You know, we've already, we've, we're beating this thing to death and, you know.
I would disagree. I think we had some very insightful dialogue.
No, I'm just saying that, you know, anyways, but I just hope we don't go around the bush too many times. So that's all.
Commissioner Gross.
Sometime ago, I made a motion postpone in the to allow for discussion between our legal staff in the Drain Office with respect to the proposed amended resolution offered by Commissioner Nakigiri, or at least presented to us. And that motion postponed was seconded. However, I would be willing to withdraw that motion if I could be assured by my colleague that he would not be offering or making a motion to go with the proposed amended resolution. In other words, it enable us to take a vote on the original resolution that's been presented to us. I think as a result of our discussion, there's, there seems to be support for going with the original. And that sidesteps the question of whether legality presented by Mr. Mifdalte versus the Drain Office. So I'm throwing that out. I'm willing to withdraw on the condition that the proposed amendment does not does not proceed. I don't know how my colleague feels.
Commissioner Nakigiri.
Yeah, I, I'm very comfortable tabling the whole thing because there's reasonable questions that have been raised that I think deserve a fuller airing. And while I think that what I've proposed is a solution to the problem, I'm willing to hear and get more information. And I'm not so close-minded that I wouldn't consider other avenues. Always looking for improvement. But I cannot commit to my colleague on my right that I'm not going to propose this amendment. Because, you know, if, like I said, it's, I'm okay tabling it. I'm okay proposing the amended resolution, but I'm not okay with status quo.
Commissioner Gross.
Based upon that commentary from my esteemed colleague, and I will stand with my motion to postpone.
I'm going to close discussion.
Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure I have the motion. I have a motion to table this resolution, basically 133, until October 20th of 2025. That is the motion that I have by Commissioner Gross, seconded by Commissioner Nakigiri, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And the subtext, understanding is attorneys get together and start hashing it out. Thank you. On that basis, I want to voice vote on the motion to table until October 20th. If we can hopefully decide it on the voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I oppose.
So we have two, no table, and seven table. So it is tabled until October 20th. And that was the original resolution that got tabled.
Correct.
Not the discussed but not motioned Nakigiri Amendment. All right, we're all set on that. So that's tabled. We're on to Resolution 13H. It's number 2025-09-134. It's a resolution authorizing and concurring with an advance from the delinquent tax revolving funds to Oaks, plural Beach, excuse me, Oaks at Beach Lake Sanitary Drainage District for the purpose of paying improvement costs brought to us by the Treasurer and the Drain Department.
So moved Sample.
Thank you. Commissioner Sample has moved it. Is there some second?
Second.
Wes Nakigiri for the second. Is there a discussion as to Oaks at Beach Lake? My observation is the revised note is just fine.
Thank you.
So we're good on that. I don't think we need to vote. But this is a roll call vote because we're at 134.
Correct.
Gentlemen, please give your attention to our clerk.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakigiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Dric.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Ponovich.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're on to letter I under 13. It's number 2025-09-135. Resolution authorizing replacement of the fire suppression system at the transportation complex brought to us by Latz.
So moved Deaton.
Commissioner Deaton has moved the resolution. Is there a second?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Domas. Is there discussion? Are there questions? Is Director Kellogg here? I'd be interested in knowing what the response was when you followed it up. You'd already made your decision on the bids, but you said you followed up on why one bidder bid $35,000 and for the same thing, somebody else bid $194,000.
Yes, so Commissioner, I don't, still don't have a great answer on that. What I do have is Director Eggleston confirmed that he went through line by line and could find no significant differences in the products used. It's just some of the, some of the costs were evidently, you know, and I don't want to say inflated, but there wasn't a good reason. I'll just put it that way. What I also have is two out of the three references came back glowingly positive, saying that they would, these customers would happily work with this company again. So that is, that is about all that I have in addition to what I told you before.
I would not put any more time into figuring out. It's just one of those unfathomable things that doesn't really matter. We picked a third party.
Yes, I think somebody mentioned that sometimes bidders don't actually want the project and so they bid outrageously high and that may have something to do with the super high bid.
Got it. Any other question or analysis, insight, discussion? Seeing none, we'll go in 135 will be a voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. I'm hearing a nine to zero voice vote. It passes. We're on to Resolution 2025-09-136. It's a resolution authorizing an agreement with Corrigan Propane LLC to provide LPG fuel services for transit vehicles at Latz. Can I get a motion?
So moved Deaton.
Support Domas.
Commissioner Deaton moved it. Commissioner Domas supported. Any need for any questions? Analysis? Commissioner Nakigiri, go ahead.
You know off the top of your head, what is our propane capacity in a bus? It's 90 gallons, 40 gallons?
Yes, usable. There's two different sized tanks. And generally, whether it's the big supply tank that we have filled or the tanks on the bus, 80% of the volume is usable. In the larger tanks, it's roughly 60 and the smaller tanks, it's roughly 40.
Thank you. Any further question? Commissioner Fiani.
I was just wondering on the table that you provided of the bids, it says below is the tabulation of the delivered prices per gallon for the dates requested. It says June 10th, 2025, July 1st, 2025, and July 22nd, 2025. So there's just going to be three deliveries over the five-year period?
Commissioner, I think that is just sort of a, we had to pick three dates within the, well, the bid was active to quote price, just so we can see what their pricing does from week to week. No, this will be, we get deliveries every couple of days.
Okay.
At Latz. So I think that was just sort of, you know, give us your pricing on these three days so we can compare to the other bidders.
So with that being said, I did notice that Corrigan propane was pretty consistent, $1.3305. But I noticed that suburban propane was trending downward. Could you speak to that? I guess my inquiry is, do we anticipate over the five years Corrigan will be consistent? Do we think, I mean, is suburban? I guess, is there a fixed rate from the contract?
There is not. It's what we asked for, what they, yeah, what we asked for was their market price, you know, the raw fuel cost plus their delivery fee. And fuel market prices, as you most, I'm sure know, they fluctuate daily, hourly, minute by minute. So I'm not sure why Corrigan is so consistent and, you know, and why in comparison, the other. And you know, and and why in comparison the others fluctuate so much. What I can tell you, just because Corrigan is our current vendor and has been since twenty fifteen, is that the prices are stable. Um you know, they they do fluctuate a few cents here and there, but in general, they're they're they've been very stable, especially this year. Um so I I can't give you a good answer on on why the the variation between bids.
Okay. Um and then I I wasn't able to pull up quickly, but um if I remember correctly, Corrigan, their actual delivery fee was less than suburban. Do you happen to have that readily available?
It's, yeah, thirty-five cents per gallon is the delivery fee uh for Corrigan.
Um. I I I don't remember seeing suburban.
I you know.
Maybe it was in here and I overlooked it.
Okay, I I don't have that table. I'm not sure if Krista is still, if she could shed any light on that. Um.
Me, I can look it up, or if you can give me just a minute.
Thank you.
Director Kellogg?
Yes.
You happen to know, I know also, it says uh that with regard to Corrigan, um there's a continuation of a no-cost equipment lease.
Yeah.
Did suburban provide such a uh amenity as well?
Um, I think that was the request in the bid. Um again, Krista, if you could confirm that um. I think that's what we asked for, so.
I'm sorry, what was your, what was the question, the second question?
Whether all of the bidders uh provided a no-cost equipment lease for the fueling equipment. Think we specified that in the bid. Good questions. I apologize for not having that readily available here.
On the first question, I'm sorry, you guys, you wanted to know what the delivery fee was? Suburban?
It's correct.
About sixty-three cents.
Okay.
Does that make sense, Greg?
Yeah, that's that sounds right, um without having the numbers in front of me. I mean, I know it was higher than Corrigan, so.
Okay, yeah, that's almost a little less than double than Corrigan. And then did they offer also the no-cost um no-cost lease? No, let's see, how was it phrased?
No cost.
Equipment lease?
So can you confirm that we specified that in the bid? I can tell you, Commissioner, that there was no additional costs provided by the other bidders that said, hey, this is your, you know, this is the cost for equipment, so.
I don't see that we have that. I I I also that we've been charged or we they put that in the bid um as far as cost to say where it's at in the bid to see that we put that in the actual RFP. I'd have to go through the RFP a lot because I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, I I'm pretty sure we specified, and that is pretty standard for these arrangements is to have the equipment, uh you know.
That's I suspect is something. So uh thank you very much for the additional information.
Of course.
I certainly think it's a a great opportunity, so.
Any further questions or analysis?
I have I have one question.
Proceed, Commissioner Helsman.
Which one of these is is uh is uh Corrigan the largest propane dealer of these three? Or you don't know?
I I think so, but I don't, I can't be certain. Um.
Because I know Corrigan.
Largest in the county.
Businesses uh they have their hands in a lot of things. They're a big corporation, so I'd assume their size helps their price to be more stable or 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 that's the delivery charge is not how they make their money. You know.
Yeah, I I think um Commissioner, they're in in terms of footprint, um and you know, number of vehicles on the road, uh I would almost, I'm almost positive they're the largest in the county as far as total, uh you know, uh these other companies, I'm not sure where they operate.
County is what I mean.
Yeah, yeah, and yes, they have um several sites, uh including one.
Places may be a bigger company, but they're don't they don't have the presence in Livingston County.
Correct. Yeah, and and that's.
More of a local.
Correct, and I think that's a a big reason for the low possible delivery cost, yep.
Any further questions? Discussion will be closed. We'll go to voice vote on this resolution. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero. That passes. We're on Resolution two oh two five dash oh nine dash one three seven. It's a resolution authorizing an agreement with Ecolane USA Inc. to provide scheduling and dispatch software to Letts. Can I get a motion?
So move Deaton.
Support Domas.
Motion by Deaton, support by Domas. Questions, analysis? Commissioner Gross.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh Greg, when this resolution appeared at General Government several weeks ago, um I asked a question concerning the validity of the proposal from Econ Lane. Uh as much as it was dated last November, I asked if you could secure from them uh some written commitment that these prices are still good. You have that?
Yes, sir. Um actually, I have a quote right here um that I could email to you. I I did not do that yet, but it's dated October first. When when the new.
I I'm satisfied that you're telling me you have it.
Yes, it's it's right in right in front of me, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
In your third whereas clause, if you have the resolution in front of you says the five-year agreement we have with Ecolane now expires August twenty twenty-six. Drop down. Seven, the seventh whereas clause, you want the new five-year contract to begin October first, twenty twenty-five. It seems like it ought to begin sometime after August twenty-six, but tell me what you're thinking if you want it to start earlier.
Yeah, so we had um the first contract was um a part, part of it was subbed out to Ecolane, so we started with another company that um called Double Map um way back in two thousand nineteen, determined that they could not deliver, and so they um we did a an amendment to that original agreement whereby um Double Map subbed out the main software to Ecolane, and that was approved by the board. Um so it's been, it's not been the cleanest uh agreement um because of that subcontract. We also have some new uh features that they're giving us at no cost. It's it's just uh it's cleaner and and the pricing is is a little better given given what we're um what we're getting out of it. I'll say the value is better. Um so my uh my desire is to terminate the existing contract early and start the new contract on October first.
Do you think there's a penalty?
There's not.
Early termination?
There's not. I tell you that.
Since you're proposing that the new contract pays eighty-three thousand um a year, what are we paying under the old contract per year?
It was um roughly the same. I provided a a comparison.
Thought I saw.
Yeah, it's it's actually uh roughly two hundred fifty dollars less this time. Um and I I think that was emailed out on Friday.
That could be what's afoot. Okay. So you also want us to put in the be it resolved that we're terminating the August twenty-sixth contract? Beginning.
Uh if if that's your preference, I typically, I don't think we would put that in a resolution, but if you're more comfortable with that, we we could.
Do you, if if you don't think there's a blowback or there's a penalty, it's okay with me. You're gonna you're gonna be the guy we're kind of come back to.
Sure, I'm I'm holding back. I got it. Yeah, no, I'm confident there's no penalty.
All right. And we're saving two hundred fifty?
Yep.
It sounds like. Thank you for answering those. Any other questions or analysis? All right, we'll close discussion and we'll go to a voice vote on the Ecolane USA propane or Ecolane USA software. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have nine to zero. We are finished with resolutions. We're at item, thank you, Greg. We're at accounts payable reports, item number fourteen. Fourteen A reads claims dated September twenty-two, twenty twenty-five, and uh fourteen B reads payables dated August twenty-nine through September eleven, twenty twenty-five. Can I get a motion for both fourteen A and B?
So move Gross.
Second sample.
Motion by Gross, second by Sample. Voice vote, all those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. I'm hearing nine to zero on the ayes. That's unanimous, passed. We're at section, we're at section number fifteen of the agenda. It's our second call to the public. It's a two-minute uh timed event. Have you any cards?
I do. Steve Williams, Marion Township.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, come on up. Make yourself comfortable. When you're ready and you begin speaking, that's when the time will start.
I'm not here to talk about the drains. However, as I went through my paperwork, you guys, I I live, I have a forty-acre farm, Marion Township. I happen to be in two drains because I'm in two river drainage districts. Marion Township is a source of three rivers, right? So it's, I have three assessments and it's seventy-eight bucks a year. What we're paying in legal costs and unnecessary legal costs is literally thousands of times that much, okay? You guys may have heard the criticism of Attorney General Nessel after this recent uh um voter or whatever was was thrown out. They she, they say that the punishment is the process. That is what is going on here. I told you before, this whole thing about the the um uh child support and everything, it took two years. It's not even done yet. It won't be done till November at the earliest. This is killing people, and you need to go out online and start to look at these things like the Livingston Mom Tribe on Facebook, Livingston Connect on Facebook. We are not the only ones going through this, all right? This is crazy. This is a giant waste of time, and you know what? This is not about divorce. People are like, oh, divorce, people hate divorce. No, it's supposed to be about the child. This is all about the child. The divorce is many years ago. It is all about the child, and that's not what's happening at all. Do you realize that between the gal and the judge, you, all of you have actually spent more time in the same room with Gavin than the gal and the judge combined. The judge has never even met the child. The gal spent twenty minutes with him in front of his birth father, right, who was glowering at him. You have spent more time with him, and yet you know, this is just, this is just crazy, okay? I'm asking for you to focus on this. If you're trying to save money for your constituents, if you are trying to prevent abuse of the youngest constituents that you have, the ones that had no vote yet, that have no voice yet, that are not being taken care of correctly, do something about the courts and this judge and this gal, this guardian ad litem ridiculous requirement. Thank you.
Thank you. No further cards? Krista, do you spy anybody on Zoom with her hand up?
No, Commissioner, I do not.
And I concur. So the call to the public is now closed with no Zoom participants. We're on to Commissioner comments, item number sixteen. Commissioner Gross.
Um. I I would like to take this opportunity to point out and remind uh colleagues and members in the audience that I I think our country is reaching a point of peril in that the youth of our country are being indoctrinated into things that we never dreamed they would be uh, be through social media or cell phones, what have you. And I have the feeling that at some point in time in the near future, we either this board or other bodies are going to have to reach a decision point on advising parents to limit their children's access to social media and utilization of cell phones. I I know that some schools and some school districts are restricting uh cell phones uh in classrooms, which I think is a good thing. But uh I I think this country is reaching a point where we're going to be in deep, deep trouble if we don't start changing things somehow. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Domas?
You have the floor. Here, uh just a short time ago, there was a demonstration promoted by our chairman and uh and his wife regarding the issue of uh the the Jesus.
Assamation.
Yeah, Charlie Kurt, sorry. And uh uh and I I attended it and sat next to uh um our chairman, and I was very impressed with the with the fact that that as a as a as a group, as a unit here, we were we were well represented, and I thought the chairman did a good job at moderating the program and uh in producing a lot of guests that had a lot of contributions to make. So I was very proud proud to be there and and uh um and I understand there was a big one down in Brighton as well, so I think it speaks well for the members of this board and also any other elected officials who are in Livingston County for the way they stood tall with this issue. So thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair.
Helsman.
Uh I um pass out calendars for our, you know, uh with gospel message on them, and I went to the uh concert parking lot. Uh didn't stay for the concert, uh but uh there was quite a few, there were a lot of folks. Uh uh but just a couple of things. First of all, Conway Township, it was supposed to be in Conway Township, and Conway Township turned it down, okay? In part because you couldn't get cellphone service and nine-one-one. They they had known in years before that nine-one-one calls did not get through. Well, it doesn't make any difference whether it's in uh Conway Township or Howard Howell Township, you got the same problem. Uh and uh when I was in at the Conway Township one, uh I I got a cellphone call. When I was at this one here, I couldn't receive a call or send a call. Uh and so that's something that uh that uh we need to think about. Uh and so far as we know, there was no life-threatening situation that happened that uh uh because of that, but it's something we need to think about. uh, because of that, but it's something we need to think about. Uh, and when I was there, I, and I didn't notice, I wasn't looking for this, and I went with another gentleman and I said, you know, in this group of people, I saw no purple hair. I don't know what that means. And and the, there were, there were many young people there that were very respectful and, uh, you know, you could tell they were fresh-faced people and, you know, had, you know, goals in life and things like that, so it, it was kind of a very interesting, uh, time for me. Uh, and it's, it, it's nice that we can have something that big in Livingston County and it be generally, if not almost completely peaceful, so.
Any other comment? Commissioner Domas, thank you for the, for the compliment on the Charlie Kirk vigil. Uh, ninety-nine percent of that was my wife. I just, I was just told I had to speak and I prepared a speech and that was it. Everything else was her. You were there for moral support.
Well, I was waiting for you to come up and correct me, so.
And the, uh, and the, uh, cellphone, uh, problems at the concerts is well-known to the emergency managers people. They ask AT&amp;T to bring in, I think, trailers that boost something or other technologically, and they have the recurring complaint that they send the small trailers as opposed to the, the ones that might handle the, the crowd. So they know about it and they try to work on it.
Right. The, the big carriers, AT&amp;T and things like that, they would need like two years to plan for it, so they're not as agile.
They tend to send those to disasters first as opposed to fun events. Okay.
Cows. I think they're called cows.
Okay?
If I remember.
We're good. Any other comment? We cannot do an adjournment. Our attorney has given us an opinion that I must call for a recess of the annual meeting to October twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five to re- and had then have the annual meeting resume in order to receive the apportionment report from equalization. So I will ask for a motion to do that recess to the twenty-seven.
The one recess and?
Motion by Helserman to recess. Is there a second?
For Deaton.
Second by, uh, Sample and Deaton as a combo, and all those voice vote to recess kindly say aye.
Aye.
Nine to zero is what I heard. We stand recessed. Thank you, gentlemen.